Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for October 8, 2016. We currently have six members of the commission present, I believe Commissioner Green will be joining us here shortly. Jumping right into our agenda, we have one item on our consent calendar which is a minimum from the October 14th.
Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Pack.
Discussion to the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. I will abstain since I was not present at the last meeting there. So we've got a five in favor vote there and we'll welcome Commissioner Green to join us tonight, just in time for the fun stuff. We have three public hearings this evening, the first one is the Clay Hall subdivision, this was continued from our last meeting, considering a preliminary subdivision plot, PC zone, Brandon Peterson's the applicant, is the applicant, yes sir, turn over you.
Good evening, Brandon Peterson with Peterson Development, 225 South, 200 East in Salt Lake City. We're just trying to take this piece out of, not out of, but in the Stone Creek overlay and just basically create some lots in accordance with the zoning and what it's master planned for. We've got a couple of interested parties, including a medical office use and a retail use and simply to get it to that point and subdivide it so then we can go to the site plan with any individual users once they actually firm this up and sell it to anyone that wants to buy it. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the applicants? Does not appear so at this point, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I don't know if there's a whole lot to add, this is just a pretty straightforward request, it helps, it implements part of Stone Creek master plan, it's just a simple commercial subdivision with bait lots and their remainder parcel. The reason that the applicant showed the site layout is just to give an idea of what that might develop like, but you'll be seeing each one of the site plans as each one of these lots develop out, so our recommendation is just to do for approval, it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Green?
I must read my packet wrong, oh my god, this is just a subdivision?
Correct.
This isn't a rezonement, okay.
Okay. This was adjourned as a public hearing, first with three this evening, I'll introduce that process. For anybody who would like to comment on any of our public hearings tonight, as each one is brought up, we would invite you up to the microphone, you would kind of give us your name and contact information, the event city staff needs to follow up with you on your questions or concerns. You'll have three minutes to make your comments, at the end of that three minutes, a little buzzer will go off, you would kind of wrap up your thoughts at that point. And on that note, we'll open up the public hearing for this item. Is there anybody who would like to comment? It's very quiet out there. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring back the commission. Commissioner Skoski.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary plots for Clay Hall B subdivision located at approximately 7804 South, 5600 West, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Pack, discussion to the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item on our agenda is the West Woods rezon, several properties between 7904 and 7930 South on 2700 West, considering a rezon of 3.1 acres from R110A to R18C. Grove Day LLC out of NASH, the applicant, is the applicant, turn over you. Commissioner Hanson.
Yes, thank you. We discussed this in the first meeting. I do know this family very, very well. Been very close friends for 50 years. I have not had anything to do with the dividing of the property or anything like that, so I just want that thing on on the record, that I will not get any financial enemies, nor have I worked on subdivision, but I do know this family very, very well, and I wanted the public to be impressed with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
I'd like to disclose that I too, I know the applicant from business dealings in the past, it's been 10 years probably, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Very good, thank you.
Oh Bill, I thought you would've forgot all about that.
Now we'll turn the time over you.
Okay, my name's Adam Nash, 4376 South, 700 East in Salt Lake. I'm the authorized agent and applicant, the Peglau family which are here, and previously the Woods family, or also the Woods family, that's current property owners that I'm working with on this property. We worked a great deal with staff on coming up with a layout for this property so that it could be sold by the family and be developed in harmony with the master plan, the planning of West Jordan City. I think you know all the history on it, but you know, the property was zoned along with the balance of the Woods property back in the 80s, and this was always under some sort of a performance zone, an R110C I think it was. We looked to keep it just in the R110, and the problem that we had is that the existing homes that we would like to keep, they won't meet the side yards and the setbacks in the R110, and they will meet the required setbacks in the R18. We are stepping up the home size to the C versus the A, both are appropriate, but new homes, people want them bigger than that. The property itself, we have laid out, that eight homes will be on a cul-de-sac coming in off of the same road that, there we go, that the rest of the subdivision comes in, so we have a controlled point of access on 2700 West for those residents. The homes that are on 2700, two of the homes are existing and they have driveways onto 2700, two lots would be created and have driveways onto 2700. There's some overhead power lines in 27, I've done some homework on that, they're far too big a caliber lines to be buried, so they'll maintain the overhead at that point. There's a small portion of the property that'll be included in dedication, I'm not sure how it ended up that shape, but we've discovered that in our due diligence, and that'll become dedicated into the road, 2700 West as well. And we're excited to be in West Jordan, working here in your city again, haven't been here for a bit, but, any questions I can address?
Any questions for the applicants?
I have one question, you said that you reduced the lot size to, for the accommodation of the setbacks, on lot 111, could that lot line be shifted to the south? And is that the setback that you were trying to meet on that house there on 111?
Yeah, there's a combination of issues, so the house on the corner is the one that won't, doesn't meet the typical setbacks in the R110 that would work in the R18, and then because of the frontage requirement in the zone, then there wouldn't be enough room between the two lots to have that lot between 11 and, what are we at, 10? No, nine and 11. So just the math kind of worked out that way.
Thank you.
Sure.
It's possible to get an E-size home on those lots?
I anticipate the homes that'll be built will be bigger than what you might think.
Would it be possible to make this an R18 with an E-size on them, if you'd be close to that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like the flexibility, be able to build what we can, a couple of lots have narrow building paths themselves, but you know, we can explore that.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, so the proposal is to rezon the three separate properties located at 7904, 7906, and 7930 South at 2700 West, from a R110A plant development zone to a R18C zoning district. A concept plan was submitted at the same time the rezon application was submitted, the applicant also submitted a preliminary subdivision, which aligns pretty closely with the concept plan. Details, the details of the subdivision will be reviewed by the planning staff and planning commission at a later date if the proposed rezon is approved by city council. The three sites that are being petitioned to be rezoned are located in a medium density residential district on the future land use map. This district allows for a density of 3.1 to 5.5 dwelling units per acre. The proposed concept plan displays about four units per acre, and a R18 zoning district fits the density allotment allowed in the medium density residential district. The average square footage on the concept plan is 9,510 square feet. So the properties surrounding the subject site to the south and to the west are also zoned R110A PD. This, this district is where the Woodco Park subdivision is located. The Woodco Park subdivision has, was approved with smaller lot sizes, smaller than the minimum 10,000 square foot lot sizes, due to the common open spaces provided towards the south and further towards the west in that subdivision, because this was a planned development that was allowed as long as the open space approved in that separation was at an equal rate to the open space of a typical R18, R110 zoning district. The proposal, as previously discussed by planning commission, is also, the proposal also includes a subzone change from a subzone A to a subzone Z, or C, and a subzone C which has a minimum living space requirement is typical for an R18 zoning district. And then just to briefly explain the setbacks that was previously discussed with applicants, the corner side yard setback of an R110 and an R18 are equal, as well as the front interior side and rear yard setbacks. The only difference between those two zoning districts as far as minimum lot requirements are the size and the minimum lot width. The minimum lot width for a R18 is 75 feet, and the minimum lot width for an R110 is 85 feet. In staff's planning, staff's report, we found that the proposal, the rezon proposal meets all five criteria listed in the staff report, and we are recommending that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to city council for the approval of the rezon.
Mr. Green. I'm gonna ask, so the setbacks for the house on the corner are the same whether we're an R18 or an R110?
It's 20 feet.
Okay, so however we subdivide this, the setbacks are gonna be the same?
That's right.
And the same with the other one to the north?
The interior side yard setbacks are also 80 feet, yeah, it's the same.
I thought you might have some more to do with that.
I'm gonna, you know where I'm gonna go, you know where I'm going with this.
I'm just waiting for it.
But I think I'll wait for a second.
All right. What are your thoughts on E-size lots, or E-size homes on those lots? Any concerns with that?
Looking at the billable area and what the applicant was looking at being able to build on each lot, they would be able to increase the square footage of what was being proposed, what they anticipated the little area would be. We might get more two-story homes in order to fit, but from my brief review, I think it would be possible.
If I could also add though, there is a definite domino effect, if you just look at the lot, minimum lot width requires 75 to 85 feet, as we were looking at the dimensions for all these lots, you know, the applicant definitely did design based off that minimum lot width, and it's hard to tell, but there are several, and I don't want to assign on the fly, but there's a potential where you're gonna lose potentially several lots going from a R18 to an R110, just based on lot frontage alone, not to mention the minimum lot size, you know, that'll come into play too, so.
The R110 PD's not in existence anymore in the code, is it?
Correct, yeah. Is it PD or PS? PD, yeah, performance or plant development. So correct, it is not.
So this is, this is one that we're trying to correct as well, because the old zoning went out of date and we're, we never corrected it when we changed the zoning code or whatever. Some of the catch-up that we've had on some of the other zoning changes, like the west side.
This was used back in the 80s and we haven't really used it since, and it was removed probably 20 years ago.
And then my last question is, so the houses immediately to the, around it, there are R110? Is that what you said?
R110A, yeah.
R110As, right?
R110A PD, so the individual lots will not be 10,000 square feet, but overall it will average 10,000 square feet.
Okay, because that was the PD that had open space in it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Well now we'll open this item up to the public, if there's anybody who would like to comment on this, the time is now yours. Okay, we will then close the public hearing and bring back the commission. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. Being that this 2700 West is a heavily used road, it is a material street that runs completely through our city, from 5400 South through South Jordan, Riverton, Love Dale. I understand the reasoning to go to the R1C because it would use approximately three lots if they stayed with the, with the 10, and that may make this not possible to develop that by using those lots, but I would like to see an E-size home, and this is a, like I say, a street that runs completely through our city, and I think an E-size lot facing 2700 West would be desirable to have, so I would prefer to see, I would go with the R18, I would like to see an E-size lot or home on it.
I would agree with you on that. Commissioner Green?
The existing home on the south end is larger than an E-size home.
Commissioner Green?
My concern, twofold, one, I'm not a fan, I think, I think a lot of you know that I'm not a fan of R18, but that's a different story. I'm concerned that we got, we're adding, my concern with the E, with the E is that we're gonna, then we're gonna put four reasonably nice houses on 2700 West, and you know, I just hate to add any more houses facing 2700 West, that as, as, as the area grows and we have more driveways coming out to 2700 West, I think we're just gonna have a bigger mess, but that's, that's part of what I'm thinking about here, is that I'm, I'm not sure I like adding that many driveways to 2700 West than having larger homes facing 2700 West, just given the nature of like what you talk about Commissioner Hanson, there's, it's, it's a main arterial, arterial road all the way from clear out south to clear out north, and you know.
Is that two?
Yeah, that's it.
Commissioner Skoski.
Thank you. I, I see both of your points, and I, I kind of agree with both of you in some way, you know, the, the thing that I see is that with 2700 West being arterial, that would be prime commercial real estate possibly eventually, but given this, they would like to do something nice, or build, take, in a sense, a lighted area and make it nice now, and I mean, we can, we can say, yeah, we could, we could push this off and hope for something down the line, but the reality is, that may never come along, and, and where we have a nice project that, that could come in now, where we already have, you know, on the other side of the road, there's, there's residential, being that it's a nice product, and if we do an E-size home, it would still add value, value and beautification to the area, I kind of lean more towards pushing for the E-size home versus waiting and hoping that, you know, maybe something else might come along later, this property's been pushed around and talked about for many years, and, and nothing's ever really come of it.
Does the transportation master plan address any upgrades to 2700 West through this area? In the foreseeable future?
No, I think 27 is already pretty much built to its ultimate design.
We would never take that to a four lane?
No.
Okay.
Just to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's designated as a collector road, not an arterial, there, there is a difference.
I guess I just wanted to point it out, there already are two driveways that are entering on 27, so this would just be an additional two driveways.
Yes.
With the, the homes on 27, so we wouldn't be adding a bunch more of that too, because your own leading back into Woodco is already existing.
Commissioner Green?
Well, I guess my, my only other concern with this is that the houses around it have, and I'm gonna have to pick my words carefully, an R110-like density, and we're actually going to increase the density here, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about increasing the density a little bit, that's probably not too far out of characteristic with the other neighborhoods, because the density's more like an R110 than the other ones, this one's an R18, is that, is that a fair assessment, that we're increasing the density here a little bit?
I would think that's fair, it would be an increase in density.
Okay. But sometimes, I wouldn't consider it an equal apple-to-apple comparison, if you look at the surrounding lot sizes, they're, they're significantly smaller than what would be built here, so.
But they're, but in those, with the lot sizes that were smaller, they were required to have some open space.
Open space.
This one won't have.
Correct, yes.
Commissioner Skoski?
Thank you. Just along with that, I mean, consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of the city general plan, it's, it's not necessarily that we're trying to make everything in an area the same, it just has to have consistent use, and, and a consistent use, that, that, this would bring it more into consistent use than what's there now, so, I think you can look at that two ways.
Oh, there's no doubt you can look at it two ways, we've had those long discussions about the R18, so.
Yeah.
You know, we know what our concerns with the R18 are, so that's, you know, that's the, you know, the density and the future, the future with R18s, that what we've seen happen in other areas with R18, and those kind of things, that I have to tell you that if we're gonna make this R18, I think I, I think I agree with you, that if the eventual, the eventualities is R18, it's gotta be R18E, I don't think we can go with C, because then, then it will make it at a price point that will tend to make it a little bit longer single, you know, homeownership than it will be the faster turnaround to, to rental property we've seen with the R18, ABs and Cs in the other parts of the city.
That sounds like a motion.
You're not giving me a motion, I mean, on this one, Commissioner.
Commissioner Skoski, all good.
All right, based on the move, the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezon the property located at 7904, 7906, and 7930 South, 2700 West, from R110A, single-family residential, zone to R18E zoning district.
I'll start with that. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Laws, discussion of the motion, Commissioner Pack.
Thank you, just a clarifying question, so it's not just lots 110 and 112 that we're recommending and motioning content?
Correct.
E-size home, you're saying every lot?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna vote no.
Motion carries six to one.
Of course I am.
We've finished the last item on our agenda tonight, which is a text amendment, considering sections 12-1-4, 12-3-1, 12-3-2, -3, and 1317-2 regarding planned center gateway signs. Dan Milich is the applicant, there he is. Turn the time over to you, we've seen a lot of you lately.
Yes, and it's good to be back. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Dan Milich, I'm director of development for Four Square Properties. Our local offices are 7533 South Center of Newport, here in West Jordan. At the September 6th Planning Commission hearing where we reviewed the site plan for the expansion and redevelopment of the Entertainment Village out of Jordan Landing, we had a series of what we call portal entry signs, or gateway entry signage, shown as part of the presentation. One of the things that we discussed during that hearing, and Scott brought up during his discussion with the commission on this item, was the fact that while everybody thought the, the signs looked nice and served a purpose, technically there's, there's no definition for that type of signage in the city code, and staff is working with us through the direction of planning commission was bring back a text amendment so that we can review that and see if there is a way that these signs could have support down the road, not only at this center, but at other centers where they may in fact be allowed or considered throughout the city. So what we've done is, in working with staff, come up with a, a number of area, I guess, generally Salt Lake area sign codes, where this type of signage was either permitted by right or considered with some sort of review requirements, and in coming up to a text amendment language with staff, we believe that the regulations for this type of signage would allow it to not only be located here, but be located in other zones in the city where it may be appropriate. What I'd like to do at this time, if I could have the planning commission look at a short video, this is a video that we've updated from the last version, and it does show these signs in a little bit better detail at this time, and if we could run that Scott, I'd appreciate that.
Salt Lake Valley is a place where you can escape, where the sun rises and sets up its breathtaking mountain views, where peace of mind means ease of living, where families can relax, grow ants in their garden, and inspiration is boundless. How to get away from a world of flexible dining. How to get away from a world of flexible dining, wild, serene, scenic experiences, sophisticated shopping in a beautiful environment. Escape at Jordan Landing, developing managed right four square properties. One of a kind development is currently undergoing renovation to create an all inclusive experience. Jordan Landing is the largest shopping center and mixed use project in Utah, located within the fastest growing region of Salt Lake Valley. With more than one point eight million square feet of retail space, one thousand four hundred fifty residential units, and five hundred eighty six square feet of office space. It's no wonder that Jordan Landing's retail alone currently attracts more than sixteen million visitors annually. A true place to escape right in your backyard. Visitors will enjoy a variety of retailers and entertainment venues, dine in style at extraordinary restaurants, and experience a weekend night in Cinemark Theater's new luxurious lounge aisle seating with something for the whole family, including a children's play area and relaxing water features. Escape at Jordan Landing is a place to get away without ever leaving Salt Lake Valley.
Appreciate your indulgence in that, but it it does show the the sign locations fairly well and and it really points back to the need um that we did discuss briefly at the uh planning commission meeting for the site plan and that's the fact that there's gonna be a lot more development out in front of primarily the Cinemark. And this directs people from not only pedestrians, but people coming out of their vehicles. This is the way that you get into this and get over to the Cinemark. And it's primarily just for that purpose to direct traffic, not only vehicular, but pedestrian traffic in the center. And that's the conclusion of my presentation. If you have any questions, me, I'd be happy to try and address those.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Commissioner Pack?
Thank you. A question for you, please. With the commercial area of Jordan Landing encompassing roughly two hundred acres, i- in this proposal, you qualify for a total of thirteen planned center gateway signs. Uh you're only proposing four. Do you foresee in the future having thirteen of those? I- is that your goal and intention?
You know, as we discussed during the the site plan uh hearing a month and a half ago, this is uh part one, if you will, of of a redevelopment effort out of Jordan Landing. Jordan Landing with this part of Jordan Landing, the Entertainment Village was first developed in nineteen ninety nine. The center's been built over the years, but this village concept of breaking it down into smaller bites, if you will, is uh what we're trying to achieve over time with the other parts of Jordan Landing. So this is the first phase. To answer your question directly, though, would there be other gateway uh signs in the future? Yes. When we do campus view, when we do airport center, when we do those other clustered areas, just like the Entertainment Village, um we feel that this type of signage, maybe not looking exactly like this, but having similar features, including the the uh the new vogue uh for the mountains uh for uh Jordan Landing. Something that's common throughout, but different enough so that each of these little villages can stand alone.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Milich? I'd like, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Chairman. So uh I thought uh Mr. Milich did a really good job in explaining the purpose and uh how this uh this text amendment came about. So um I'll just kind of get into more of the details on uh what the proposal is. So what this amendment will do is essentially establish a definition for um this type of gateway signage. And uh in this definition, as you can kind of see here on the screen, um in this definition, it essentially limits these types of signs to um over the private driveways and pedestrian areas as opposed to uh public right of ways. So um the the public right of way prohibition will still uh be in effect, so we won't be seeing these signs placed uh over public streets or or sidewalks or anything like that. So now the height and spacing requirements um are pretty much identical to uh what's required for pole signs right now. Uh the only difference would be in the height. Uh we've extended that to a little bit more to thirty feet instead of uh the twenty five, which is what a pole sign is at. Uh just to allow for a little more flexibility since these will uh be placed over areas where cars will be uh going under and um now those clearances will actually refer to uh section that's already in our sign code. So we've already got those clearance requirements covered. Uh the density, we've we've talked about a little bit about that before, but uh um we've got the density set right now at uh one sign per fifteen acres of uh developed area. So these will apply primarily to campus style developments, uh similar to our planned center signs that were approved uh a few years ago. So uh staff did a a study of where uh these signs would be allowed within the city and uh the areas outlined in red would uh be all the areas that uh that are potential locations for these types of signs. So some of the major ones, uh just as examples, would be uh Jordan Land or well, of course, Jordan Landing, but uh uh the Jordan Valley Hospital is one, Salt Lake Community College. The Highland Shopping Center, which uh is includes a Smiths over at uh fifty six hundred west and seventy eight hundred south. Um a- as well as the campus area around City Hall. So just to kind of give you an idea of where these signs could potentially go. Um amendments to the current code will be pretty minimal. Uh the only section we'd really be looking at would be uh the area that covers planned center signs. Uh basically, we're just adding these gateway signs to that intent section just to reiterate that uh these signs are intended for uh campus style developments and to uh specify some of the base materials, um just to kind of enhance some of that quality. Oh, and uh finally, the the other section of the code would be entitled thirteen. Uh this more specifically, title thirteen dash seventeen. So this section goes over what zones specifically these signs will be allowed in. Um so right now we have those allowed in the uh planned community, professional office, research park, community commercial, regional commercial, and manufacturing park districts, as well as the public facilities districts for uh the hospital and the city hall campus. Then we've amended, uh you can kind of see here at the bottom of the screen, um there was a provision in there that uh allowed village center uh signs to be approved during the site plan process. Uh we've essentially are proposing to amend this section to include these signs as well. So um for some of these major developments that are under site plan review, uh they can have that sign reviewed by the planning commission at the same time that site plan is being reviewed. Just to eliminate some of the uh unnecessary review processes. So uh now to clarify, uh any existing development that's already constructed, uh they would have to come in for an administrative conditional use permit so that it would then go through that review process. Uh so based on uh these findings and those findings in staff report, uh staff recommends the planning commission forward positive recommendation to the city council concerning the text amendment for planned center gateway signs as proposed in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Uh in that case, we'll open this up to the public if there's anybody who would like to comment on the last item on our agenda.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kyle Hodgson, sixty five twenty one south, forty one sixty five west. Um I would like to make a recommendation if the commission decides to proceed with this amendment. Uh I am a a pilot that utilizes the South Valley Regional Airport over there. And uh with the current light pollution that exists, it's it can already be challenging to spot other aircraft that are flying around. And uh for the safety of the community, I would recommend that before uh something like this is undertaken, there be some kind of study to assess the light or the the light pollution impact that these signs would have on uh pilots as they're flying at night. Um maybe some kind of verbiage within the the code that talks about maximum luminosity for the signs at night. That way we uh ensure the safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to comment on this item? We'll then close the vote of hearing and bring it back to us, Commissioner Sockey.
Thank you. Um thank you for bringing that up because I wouldn't have even thought about that. So I'm grateful that you even spoke out. Um yeah, I I agree with our pilot. I think that before we finish it up, we oughta maybe look at at some provisions on maximum luminosity before we just write it off and put it out there. I didn't even think that was an issue, but with the airport being right next to it might be worth.
I wonder if Ken has any thoughts.
Do you consider this at all? Yeah, you?
You know, we we would definitely um accept a a condition or an additional provision under the code to uh screen lighting so that it's it's not just cast up into the sky. There there's ways to design the coat lighting and other things so that, you know, the light goes out instead of up. And these signs could be designed so that they they meet that uh requirement. Or if if the commission wants to establish a certain uh luminosity uh degree that can't be exceeded, um that's probably something that could be measured, but uh my my hope would be that we could design it such that light isn't just cast off into the sky. It's a similar thing that you do with streetlights. Um so that uh they're cut off type streetlights. The light just comes down. It doesn't go out to the sides or or even up at all. So you could definitely accept the condition of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How would we even establish that condition?
Well, first of all, I would not recommend that we attach any uh lumen requirement to this. The the enforcement would be a nightmare and we simply don't have the uh the tools available a- a city staff to go out and measure those types of things. So I think the best uh alternative is to to just put uh some verbiage in there that that talks about uh, you know, no uplighting or, you know, it shall be, you know, screened at a hundred percent uh from going upwards. We we can work on, we can wordsmith that. And I think that's a great idea, but y- you know, honestly, we look at some of the other signs and the other lighting in Jordan Landing. This is gonna, this won't even register one bit, in my opinion, uh as far as impacting the airport. Um it's it's a good idea and we should make sure that we're, you know, Jordan Landing's a good neighbor to the airport, but this is, that that issue is, in my opinion, a much bigger issue than than this simple code amendment here tonight. Um we do, we, I know that we're, I'm gonna be working constantly with our city attorney's office in updating our sign code and that might be a good opportunity to address, you know, uh those those issues, not only from Jordan Landing to to the airport, but everywhere else in the city. Uh we do have a a section of the code that talks about lights spilling off onto neighboring properties. Um it doesn't necessarily talk about uplighting and dark sky ordinance. Uh I've worked in other communities that that have very restrictive dark sky ordinances to preserve uh nighttime ambulances and those types of things, but um I don't know. Uh we we could certainly wordsmith something between now and when this goes to city council uh at at your direction, uh or we could uh simply uh just make a note of it and address it when we redo the entire sign code.
Uh one thing I would point out too is that uh a lot of these would be either reviewed through the administrative conditional use permit process or through the site plan process. So we could place conditions of approval on it at that time as needed. Just a suggestion.
Commissioner Green?
I'm not opposed to those kind of signs, so I want to make sure that I'm by the way, I want to welcome the Boy Scouts that are here. I'm sure you're working on the community or your merit badge for citizenship in the community. So we're glad you're here. Uh I I guess my concern is is goes specifically to the square footage of the sign. And and the reason I'm trying, you know, the the gateway signs at Jordan Landing, I think they're gonna, they're gonna work for for what Jordan Landing does. I'm looking at the two hundred and thirty eight acres that was the Facebook site that might be a large campus development or the or Jordan or a Gardner Village or at some other place that we might have. And somebody comes along and wants to put up this great big gateway sign. And and my con- my concern is, and and this this'll sound terrible, but as I as I drive down I fifteen right now and you go down into Lehigh, it seems uh particularly the the Thanksgiving Point area. Everybody in their planet is trying to get a bigger sign. And everybody in their planet thinks that we live in Las Vegas and we haven't have to have the Las Vegas signs along I fifteen. And what I'm concerned about with not, without having a specific restriction on the square footage is that we could really have, you know, somebody builds a private entry that's sixty feet wide and it's thirty feet high and they could make it you know, two or whatever with the weight would, we could have some really ugly signs on some of our campuses. And that's without a square footage restriction, I think that we could, we could be really facing uh an an issue there. I mean, i- in the rest of the sign ordinance, we have square footage about, you know, how big certain signs can be and those kind of things. And with this and with the number of places across, if all we had was Jordan Landing and this was just gonna go in Jordan Landing, I'd probably not really care. Because Jordan Landing's a fairly self-contained, it is a self-contained development, but when we're talking about some of the other developments and and across the city, I'm wondering what kind of I I I don't know if we're gonna open a Pandora's box, but I really am concerned about the, you know, the maximum area because it says that, you know, in there it's dictated by the maximum height and the minute, you know, the pedestrian clearances and those kind of things, but you could go up and a couple other things that I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile that based on the maximum area. You know, the 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 thirty feet probably works, but we really, there might be an issue here with the maximum area. And so I'm I'm trying to reckon, trying to figure that out. Because I, because I really do see those signs, some of those signs down at Thanksgiving Point. I wonder if I was driving into Vegas. But, you know, and 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 people are gonna push the the maximum area as much as they pot, and I'm not saying you are, but because because your signs, you've got a specific make model theme that you want for Jordan Landing. What I'm concerned about is when we write a generic ordinance, uh somebody's not, somebody may not be as responsible for their for their gateway sign that the four square is gonna be. And that's where I'm going with this. And I don't know how to reconcile that.
But with that thirty foot height and seeing that we have to maintain vehicle and pedestrian clearances, it does kind of limit the square footage.
Not to go up.
Thirty foot.
It would be one of the maximums. Okay, I I see what you're saying. The maximum height is thirty feet. Okay.
So when you look at standard road and pedestrian clearances.
Yeah, you can still make it seventeen, eighteen, twenty, you know, you still make seventeen feet wide. On a pedestrian, you could easily make it, you could easily make it, you know, it's thirty feet high and you you easily could have a sign that's twenty feet high and thirty, you know, thirty feet wide from the roadway if it's a pedestrian walkway. You really could have a big massive sign. And then a question is, would they want to make that an electronic sign? Because this doesn't have any, you know, or does that become part of a billboard or something else with electronic sign? You see where I'm going with that? Do you see where I'm going with that? That's, that's, that's the question, you know, is if you had a, even if you had this, you know, it was, you know, three or four feet wider and it was all electronics, would we allow that under this code? I think we would, and that's the question. We want those kind of signs everywhere in the city, and I don't know how to address that in detail to prevent that kind of thing across the city. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, if, it's all right, we can maybe address some of those concerns. As far as the electronic component, if they chose to go that route, we would just apply the existing sign code, which allows for up to fifty percent of the allowable sign copy, so that they would have that ability to, you know, do what everybody else has done citywide. The challenge with crafting any new ordinance, and you know this, is we want to try to anticipate any, you know, any collateral damage, while at the same time, we want to give enough flexibility for creativity. Given the parameters of max height, minimum clearance for vehicles or pedestrians underneath, we thought that would be sufficient control. You know, if the commission and ultimately the council feels that a max, a maximum square footage is needed, you know, we could look at that. I don't know if the applicants calculated what this particular max square footage would equal. There are dimensions on there, but maybe, maybe he can address that, if you want to ask him about that particular issue.
You know, Scott, as a rule of thumb, what we did, and it may look a little bit bigger than that in that image, but we used the fifty percent rule. So let's say that, that face that those letters are on is, just gross numbers here, but that's a hundred square feet, it's fifty square feet of sign copy. And that's, that's what we would do, is, you know, use that as a, and that's in the city code anyway, I believe. That's something that we would have to honor as far as total sign copy for that area. So, and that design, that's approximately fifty percent of that surface is covered with sign copy.
Yes, I think this, I like this sign. He talks about having additional signs such as this. The thing that bothers me about the ordinance is the other places we're talking about, they may be allowed. We're gonna have sign clutter. We have one at Jordan Landing, excuse me, the medical center. Across the street, we have one at the school. The empty building down the street, whatever it was called. It's a large campus. Are we gonna allow another one there? Are we gonna allow one in Shopco where it's all, I mean, I just worry about sign clutter throughout our city if we allow these kind of signages on large office or recreational or shopping areas.
But it can only be placed on private roads and private walks, so it couldn't be used as an entrance from Redwood into the property.
Right, and there's the spacing requirements, too, so it kind of gives them the option. If they want to do their normal big pole or pylon sign, they still have to meet the spacing requirements, so they have. Looking at, you know, a hundred and fifty feet from any other pole, pylon, plant center sign, a hundred feet from any monument sign, fifty feet from any other freestanding sign, I believe, you know, again, it's just our thing, that should restrict that from, you know, going and cascading across all of those areas you see outlined, because most of those areas already have existing signage. And they would, in order to put one of these in, they would have to meet, of course, all the other requirements, but most likely, they would have to tear down an existing sign to accommodate the spacing requirements.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about like, you're talking about the Shopco on ninety south and Redwood Road, or is that the one you're talking about? You could put a pylon on the corner, you could put one of these down by Home Depot, and we still, I think we could have some, I think I agree with you, I think we could have some serious sign clutter, because a hundred and fifty feet's not that far. I mean, that's only fifteen, eighteen, twenty parking spots, depending on how you measure it. That's not that far, and, and, you know, as you mentioned that, I'm wondering, is there a way that we can restrict this to a different size of, is there a better way to restrict these sizes, size based on the size of the campus? You know, Jordan Landing's what, two-hundred-something acres? Is that what you were saying, Commissioner Pat?
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, the Facebook property that we were messing around with, that's two-hundred-something acres. I'd hate to see a sign like this go on a, you know, I, you know, some, I don't know what we're considering large here, you know, if it's twenty or thirty acres, we might get, you know, I don't know what we're talking about with the actual size acreage of some of the developments, but a couple of these seem fairly, a couple of these things seem fairly small, so I'm, I don't know. Like I said, for the intent of what we're doing now and the signs that four-square wants to put on Jordan Landing, I'm good with the design, and I'm good with the amendment, but what I'm worried about is to spill over another part of the city, and that's where, how do we address that so that we don't have the sign clutter?
Mr. Hodgson?
Thank you. Just for clarification, I looked up on the Federal Highway Administration, a minimum vehicle height for clearance is fourteen feet, so that would make it a maximum of four-hundred-and-eighty square feet of signage, so just for the record. It's quite helpful.
That would also match our code as well, just by the way. Commissioner Pat?
Well, thank you. And you can only have one per fifteen acres of total planned development, so true, it only needs to be a hundred and fifty feet from any other pole, pylon, or plant center sign, but you need at least fifteen acres that you're developing, correct?
Yeah, so it's one sign for every fifteen acres that they have. So if they have thirty acres, they would be allowed two. If they have fifteen acres, they'd be allowed one.
So to me, it's, you know, we've, it seems like we've addressed all these issues that we brought up from existing code, whether it's light or sign clutter, because I want to be, you know, sensitive to all of that as well. This seems like it's already been covered.
And how many acres do we have across the street, just for example? Anybody know that this size of the area we're talking about across the street?
I have a guy inside here.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of different iterations I've seen over the years, but it varies from thirty to forty acres, depending on what area it's grabbed.
Depending on how far east, depending how far east.
If you go south, there's a lot of variables.
We could, we could be talking about two or three signs on a piece of property that size.
And perhaps we just need to define this for density, the planned development area, you know, if we can, if we can just nail down what that is. Jordan Landing is obviously a planned commercial center.
I think the Highlands would probably figure, would figure into a planned commercial area.
So maybe in conjunction with the, you know, an approved development plan, or sign, sign package. I mean, Jordan Landing has a sign package the commission has reviewed and approved. So that would give us some more review, some more control, instead of allowing it to go everywhere. They'd have to come in and get a sign plan approved by the planning commission.
See, I would, I think, I think that's probably a good solution, is the sign package has to come before us, and yet then you actually get to see the signs, see what they look like and the density and the kind of property they're on, and maybe, maybe that works.
What my question, though, is what kind of teeth would we have if they bring it in front of us and it meets the minimum requirement? You know, does that then start falling to that, you know, that arc kind of category where, you know, we approve sign A and it's X amount of square feet and this luminosity or whatever, and so how do we, you know what I mean? How do we say no to sign B even though we don't like the way it looks? You know, like, where can, where is the precedent for authority to stop that? Because it's not really health, safety, or welfare issue, so at that point.
But I think you could look at, in that, in that kind of a sign package, you could look at placement and not, placement, you could actually move the placement, and maybe, and maybe that's enough control, maybe, I don't know, is that enough control in that kind of a situation to look at placement so that it doesn't affect the neighbors and it doesn't create issues with all the others? I don't know.
Make you turn your signs sideways.
I, I don't know.
I don't know either, right? It's kind of a tough.
Commissioner Pat?
Thank you. So, Mr. Link, are you saying make that a condition of approval? Will we institute a sign package approval process where it comes back before the planning commission? It's kind of brainstorming.
Yeah, if you're looking at page two of your staff report under the sign standards, I've got Ben pull it up here on the screen, maybe. Under density in table twelve-point-three-point-two, it talks about, it says one per fifteen acres of total planned development area, you know, and then we could say in conjunction with a, an approved sign plan. And we already have the process for, for sign plan approval, which it goes to the planning commission to review. I gotta check Mark here, because he knows the sign code better than I do, so.
So that would also change your, all of these from the administrative conditional to a conditional?
If the commission, or again, ultimately, the council feels that additional eyeballs on these things is more appropriate than just, you know, staff, then, then that would be the way to go.
But the sign package has to come before planning commission.
Yep.
By default.
And by default, then they would take it out of the AC and make it a conditional.
So if we were to go forward and have a positive recommendation, we would just say with a conditional, with the condition of an approved sign package?
Well, they would actually amend the proposed.
Density here, yeah. Okay, so that would be our condition.
So, yeah, when we receive these things, we would just make sure that it followed the, you know, some of the intentions listed in twelve-point-three-point-three, which it says, you know, the intent is to allow for such a sign or signs to direct people and traffic to a large campus or regional business center. In addition to that, because it would be a conditional use, we'd have the criteria that we apply for any conditional use, and that gives, that would give the commission the ability to place any additional conditions, whether it be light bleep up or whatever, we could address it through the conditional use process.
See, and I think I like that, because then, then we can attach the conditions as it comes through, then we can attach light conditions or some specific thing. I think, I, I think that would be in favor of the amendment if we make that one text change to say it has to have an approved sign package, and they go from administrative conditional to conditional in thirteen-seventeen dash two. I think those would, those two minor amendments would make it, where we would, where we would have, where the city would have, you know, because it would go staff, us, and council to review it. Conditional use would have to have a public hearing as well, so then we, so we would have neighborhood input. I think that would, from my perspective, I think that'd probably be a pretty good process. And I think it would, and it'd address the issues that you said, how can we control it, because you'd have staff working on it, everybody working on it, the neighbors could put their feedback in, and we would get something that would work for the city, and it would just wouldn't be clutter. I agree.
It would go to council, though, right? That would stop us.
Correct, yeah.
But, yeah, but I.
Commissioner Hare?
Just to clarify, you were concerned about sign placement, and would the sign package address the sign placement? And when you say package, that includes that?
Yes, so it would show in relation to the development of the site, buildings, et cetera, yeah.
Commissioner Hare?
Well, great, thanks, and I'd like to make a motion. It's based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed text amendment to title twelve of the West Jordan Municipal Code as addressed in this report relating to plant center gateway signs with the additional provision of a sign package, you know, we're seeing sign package approval process to change it from administrative conditional to conditional. How do I say that? In section twelve-dash-three-dash-three and thirteen-dash-seventeen-dash-two.
Can I ask you to also say, including the title eight? In the motion, it just said, that it's all in.
Twelve-dash-three-dash-three and thirteen-dash-seventeen-dash-two? In the main.
She got it, she got it. Thank you.
You have to amend both twelve and thirteen in the motion.
What do you mean twelve and thirteen? What did I miss? Sorry. Oh, to amend title twelve and thirteen, and title thirteen.
Yeah, it's twelve, twelve-three-dash-two, amend the, amend the density in thirteen-seventeen-dash-two, amend the condition, right?
So going back, the, the, the motion is to amend title twelve and title thirteen of the West Jordan Municipal Code.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Pat, second by Commissioner Skoski. Any discussion to the motion? All favors say aye. Aye. And opposed. Motion carries seven to zero, which concludes our agenda for this evening.